A routine investigation and it turned into a horrific slaying of two of the finest officers in the city of Santa Cruz. So I would like to just recognize and, and hold this meeting this evening in recognition because I think it's important for us to keep that incident, those officers, in our memories and as well, keep in mind that, and particularly that our officers here in Capitola, put themselves in harm's way every day for our safety, peace, and health. And so with that, I would ask everyone here to join me in a moment of silence in memorance Thank you, everyone, for participating in that recognition. Next, I would like to move on to the next item on the agenda, which we have a presentation this evening and is Bruce in, in the audience, I hope so.
All the way up to the mayor.
Yes, yes, all the way up to the mayor. That's the former mayor. Let's do it, let's do it together, okay? And, well, Bruce, as well as being my neighbor, my friend, he's a former council member, two-time mayor of the city of Capitola, but we're here tonight to recognize him because he's retiring from the Capitola Safety and Public Safety Foundation. And if I can get this plaque out of this, thank you, chief.
Public Safety and Community Service Foundation.
Public Safety and Community Service Foundation. Bruce was on the council when the foundation was first formed. He is a founding member, has been sitting on it for, what, nine years now? He is a past president of the foundation, you know, as an avid car enthusiast. He was instrumental in developing the Capitola Auto Road Show, what do they call that? Car show? Yes. Which is an annual event now. He also started the, the Capitola Golf Tournament, which was a fundraiser for the foundation. And so, and you didn't realize you'd been doing all these wonderful things. But he is, he is retiring and leaving the foundation now and he's leaving it in good hands. The purpose of the foundation is to support the Capitola Police Department and community service here in the city of Capitola. So Bruce, as the mayor and as a resident of Capitola, I want to thank you for your work and your service to the community and I know that they're going to miss your presence and your enthusiasm, leadership, and hard work. So with that-
Presents like Christmas?
And, 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 well, no, I think they're still, they're still expecting, they're still expecting those presents, but having you not be there in the, and I imagine you will be continuing to serve in some capacity.
My advisor.
Yes. Chief, do you want any words you'd like to add?
Bruce, on behalf of the police department, I really want to thank you for everything that you've done in moving us forward and being words of wisdom, being a friend, and supporting our effort in public safety to this community. You've done a tremendous job in that and you are a mentor and I appreciate everything that you've done for me and the police department.
Speech.
I appreciate it. Thank you.[284.33][284.33](APPLAUSE). Take the mic, take the mic. Come on, take my, do it, take, come on. The mic. Okay. I'm not used to speaking up here.[302.44][302.44](LAUGHTER). I want to thank the police chief. I, you know, it's a lot of work, but when you're doing it for the right people and for the right community, it's no work at all, most of the time. And I came to, not only with the ride-alongs I did when I was on the, on the council, but after that, participating and interacting with the, the officers and with the, the police chief, came to realize that they're not just police officers, they're members of the community and they care about everybody. I think it's a reflection on, on their leadership, by matter of fact, I know it's a reflection on their leadership. You know, we have a police chief now that born and raised in this community and really cares about it, is approachable. Just the other day, I had a neighbor that was having a problem and I really didn't want to start at the top and work down, but she was real concerned that she didn't want to, well, it was a long involved thing and so I called Rudy and, or the chief, I'm sorry. You get too familiar with some of them sometimes and you forget protocol and you don't want to demean their, their position, so. And he took the call and sat on with her and resolved the situation, so. The police force is second to none as far as I'm concerned. And the foundation, over the years, we've supported the Junior Guard Program, which is near and dear to my heart also. So we support their scholarship program. So anybody that has some extra cash laying around and want to know a good organization to donate some to, we're nonprofit, tax-exempt, and you can actually take that money and, tell us, tell them who you want it to go to. So if you wanted to help support the Junior Life Guard Program or the Police Dog Program or any of the programs that the foundation does, you can direct your donations to that. So anyway, long story. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. Good night.[463.43][463.43](APPLAUSE). Next, we have a presentation from Tad Sterling of the United Way of Santa Cruz County, the 2-1-1 Coordinator.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you for allowing me to take a few minutes of your time. How do we help each other in our communities? There are a number of ways and, and obviously, we've just seen one example with Bruce. I'm here to acknowledge the council for its leadership in relationship to the establishment of 2-1-1 in this county. Small counties traditionally couldn't afford to have this robust system that helps people find services. It takes some small funding within the county to make that possible. And in the beginning, back in 2010, the cities, including Capitola and the county, and hospitals and other major donors stepped forward and funded the 2-1-1 system for Santa Cruz County. Over the past three years, it's, that system of, that referral system has served 15,000 people and I'll digress for just a minute for the audience and others that don't know what 2-1-1 is. It's an information referral number. It's authorized by the PUC. And in order to get that authorization, the city and the counties have to step forward and endorse it, which the city of Capitola did, as well as the Crime Commission, Criminal Justice Council, and other organizations, Disability Commission, and others. And why would they endorse it? Because it's a fairly high-tech system that allows anyone to pick up the phone, call 2-1-1 and much like 9-1-1, they get a call specialist, somebody skilled in assessing their need, primarily for health and human services in our county, knowing that there are 400-plus public and nonprofit agencies in this county that help people. So those specialists ask critical questions and able to referral people to the kind of services that they specifically need, not only for them, but in the geography in which they live. So I want to acknowledge the, the council and the city for being an endorser of that at the very beginning and in addition, they've been a founding sponsor over the years, making a fortunately relatively small investment in the cost of putting this system in place. Most of the funds for this actually go to the call centers so that those representatives are there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in Spanish, as well as the availability of other languages to, to help people that call. So I want to acknowledge the county for doing that, the city for doing that. The other primary service that some people are aware of and actually affected Capitola and the harbor is during disasters, we partner, 2-1-1 partners in this county with 9-1-1, who's an extreme supporter of 2-1-1, whenever there's an emergency like the tsunami, to refer people in non-emergency situations. So in the case of the tsunami, people were calling to see, should I abandon my home on the bluffs? What should I do? And they were informed by the Emergency Operations Center, up at the 9-1-1 center, what to do through the Public Information Officer and that information was disseminated through the 2-1-1 call system. So in addition to helping people on an everyday basis with their needs, we also, the system also provides disaster relief. That's kind of the top of the story here. I didn't want to take any more time. I really was here to acknowledge that it does take a community to make this system possible. In larger metropolitan areas, there are a number of funding sources that make it possible, but in a small community or county like ours, it relies on matching support, which the city council and other cities have provided. So that's kind of it and I'm open to any questions that you may have. We've distributed a report, which I think you all have in your hands. I can make more copies available. It's not only informational about 2-1-1, but it also has some of the statistics and information about how the services have been, the types of calls that have come in. So I thank you for your time and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Just a suggestion, if you can try to get word out about the program work, because a lot of people I know that I've talked to, they weren't really familiar with it. So PSAs, newsletters, you know, free ads, whatever people can think of to get the word out, because it's a great service.
It is a difficult process. For instance, I was presenting before the, the county Board of Education. We distribute 40,000 pieces to all the parents in the county through the school systems every year. We distribute 100,000 rack cards and bookmarks throughout the county. We use PSAs in conjunction with the United Way of Monterey County on the major TV stations and thanks to the Sentinel, there's almost always an ad in the Sentinel on 2-1-1. But it's kind of like when 9-1-1 was in its infancy, people said, 9-1-1? What's that? We're kind of in that same situation, even though in three years, we've had a lot of publicity. It's an ongoing process of finding resources through each of the cities and counties and through the public agencies of getting the word out and getting that information out. So if I was going to make an ask, it's to, not ask for continuing funding, because I think you'll do that, but to ask for any methodologies we can use to get that word out through the offices of the city. Any other questions?
Seeing none, thank you very much, Tad, for coming this evening and reporting to us on 2-1-1.
My pleasure.
And hopefully, we can be a part of getting the word out to the community that that is the number that folks can call if they just need basic information about our safety net services. So thank you and thank you for your work with United Way.
Quite welcome.
Next, we have a report on closed session and John, if you don't mind, may I do this one?
Sure.
I, I want to report on closed session that for the first time in eight years on the council, we did not have a closed session this evening. And what that means for everyone is that there was no litigation for us to talk about. So I, I think that, that's just, for me, it's, it's an amazing moment and so that is our report on closed session. Thank you, John.
You're welcome. Does that mean John can go home?
No, he, he needs to stay so he can keep us out of any further litigation. Next, we have noted additional materials. We did get the 2-1-1 materials that were handed out to us. I don't believe that there were any other additional materials. So we'll move on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any requested additions or deletions from council members? Seeing none, I would like to ask the council if you would be willing to accommodate a change to tonight's agenda, moving item 9D, which is the Consider Supporting Assembly Bill 1603 Outdoor Environmental Education, moving that up to just before item 9A. So in essence, that will become 9A.
Mr. Mayor, does that propose to be a lengthy item because we have an applicant and an appeal?
Well, I thought that this, this is not a lengthy item.
Okay.
I think it will be going pretty short and, and since there are also folks here, because I do realize that appeal may take quite some time. So if that's okay with the council members, okay, all in, well, is there, so, somebody willing to make a motion to make that change?
Some move?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Which will bring us now to public comments. Are there, and this is opportunities for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is anyone that like to address the council? Yes, please, come right up.
Hi, I'm Deborah Young and I'm a resident of Capitola and I spoke at the last meeting regarding the signs, the neon flashing signs with the large solar panels that have been placed on Park Avenue. We've received a lot of emails and testimonials from local residents and obviously not going to read all of those, but I've been requested by one couple to present their email as they could not be here today. So I'll read you this and leave you a copy. "We abide at 850 Park Avenue, Unit Number 15B, and have lived there for over 10 years. We bought this particular three-bedroom unit for a premium price because of the direct, unobstructed view to the ocean. It was the entire reason for the purchase of a condo rather than a home in the area as we felt the unobstructed view to nature, the eucalyptus trees, and the ocean was worth that investment. Imagine my surprise to return home from a trip away to find a neon-green, very intrusive, strange-looking, large highway traffic sign, whose apparent sole purpose is to reduce traffic at the one point of Park Avenue that because of necessitated stop at the stop sign just prior, is not actually the point of real concern for that traffic speeding that occurs quite a ways down in the 25 mile-per-hour zone. A point which the police department/city council has granted is true. That leaves us as concerned active citizens in our locality and as taxpayers confused as to the sound thinking behind that decision at the loss of a property value enhancement that we have definitely paid for when we bought our residences and certainly affects that investment going forward, for a reason that is nonetheless with this quote 'solution' left unsolved. For us, that would be local government at its least effective and we are hoping saner, more problem-solving solutions can be found that reassure and reaffirm our trust in the efficacy of that leadership. We hope that this note helps as further information gathering in that process and finding a more suitable, equitable, non-view and value obstructing solution before we feel the need in protecting that investment to take it to the next level of activism. Sincerely, June Gorman and Leonard Ferrari, 850 Park Avenue." Thanks.
Thank you. See anyone else that like to address the council? Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Seuss and I reside at 850 Park Avenue. I was here the last time that you met and we talked a little bit about the loss as that letter from those, from June and Leonard, the loss due to the signs that we had gotten from appraisers, not realtors, because they're the ones that really put, set the value of what a loan can be achieved at. And those people, the two that we used were the two people that we, when we originally bought it, that appraiser, and then the one when we refinanced that we used that appraiser as well. So they know this area, they live in the community. Safety is obviously the, the issue and on Park Avenue and the objective was to slow people down going from the 25 mile-an-hour zone. You know, they were going down that hill, coming from the village and then speeding up to 35. That hill takes you about five miles an hour extra as it is. And then they just kind of speed up before they even get to that section, but more assuredly, when they come from the 35 mile-an-hour zone, they start accelerating up that hill from what we understand. And some of the accidents were occurring more down that end of the, end of the street, not where we are located. The other section of it is, that could have been handled, another solution. I know that there's some back and forth on the crosswalk, but we have one in Capitola with a crosswalk with the lights over by Whole Foods over there and it works really well when people are trying to get across the street, because the, the main purpose was because there were a few people that lived on Cabrillo, from what I understand, that couldn't get across the street, which is an issue. But those kinds of things can be solved with a crosswalk with lights or with a stop sign. The other issue, there were other solutions, like the solar panel, could have been just as effective, because we were told that the, because of the trees, that the sun would not penetrate onto the solar panel. Well, and then supposedly, we didn't want to thin out the eucalyptus trees. There were a few parties involved in getting the reduced speed signs, I think, that made a real issue about it, from what I understand, and I've talked to many people about this. But we've talked and we've gone, and I, I talked to someone today when I was at work and they happen to be on the Coastal Commission and we had a little talk and very enlightening and she supports us. And lastly, not to belabor the point, but, I'm sorry, I have, it's not just a few people. And here are copies for all of you and for you. And again, in defense of this precious scenic corridor and its wonderful views, our demand remains that these flashing, now, at that point was fluorescent electrical speed signs, be removed. And there are not three, not 10, not 20, not 30, but 89 people. So we're not dealing with just a few people in the area, we're talking about a whole lot of them. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. See anyone else who would like to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda? Yes, come up, please.
I was going to come up and I wanted to, with the poll number, number D, 9D, but I guess I didn't get the chance. But then I'm here to, to speak up. After being a member here for so, for so long, I just want to say thank you to, to the Vice Mayor Dennis Norton and it's going to be a shame to be missing Mark Wheeler since he's going to be retiring soon, but with the recent haps to me with using 2-1-1 and all the resources, that I have been robbed and stolen from every entity, from Melissa Klein to Human Resources up on Emline Street, a special needs trust that was driven out and me going up to court with Rebecca Conley just going, what do you guys think you're doing? We have every resource here in Capitola and Santa Cruz and basically, you're duplicating everything. It's been in the paper, you know? And it's a, it's a real shame when you could, when this can happen to a military Gold Star son. When, when I'm trying to recognize 107 people that are still unknown to this day, that did fight for our freedom. And I do think that officers of Capitola and Santa Cruz, you know, for, for their jobs as civil servants, that to protect us.
Thank you. Is anyone else like to address the council? Seeing none, I'm going to close the microphone and we will now move on to item number seven, which is City Council, City Treasurer, and Staff Comments. Council members, yes?
Did you want to announce first about the broadcast?
Yes, I, I was going to, I do that as part of mine, but I'll-
Part of yours, okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and do that. And what Stephanie was asking me to let everyone know, that this meeting is being televised and taped and it will be rebroadcast on community television and it will be on Saturday, February 29th. Unfortunately, we don't have the exact time and it's on channel 25.
71, 72-
Oh, and also 71?
We don't get 25 here. 71, 72, 73.
71, 72, and 73. Okay, yes. So, yes, Stephanie, did you have further comments?
I had just a couple of, of announcements. The new museum show is opening pretty soon, so everybody put this date on your calendar, March 22nd, 1 o'clock in the afternoon, there'll be a lovely reception and the museum will be open all afternoon. We're also looking for more volunteers, so if any of you would like to come down for a two-hour stretch at the museum, it's fun. It's really fun to greet people that come from all over and, and to enjoy the exhibit. I'd like to also have, encourage people to go to the SoCal Creek Water District meetings. You can look at their website and see when they are, just to follow this important issue. If you have time to go and just sit and listen, go for an hour, just get a flavor of what's going on. It's very, very interesting. So that's a good subject to follow. And I wanted Mike to make an announcement about the art, the beautiful new art in the room.
I have it on my list.
Good.
Do you want to go ahead, Mike?
Yes. If you noticed, the Art and Cultural Commission has put a new installation in the city council. It is the art of Kim Hogan, former Begonia Festival poster artist, art and wine poster artist, Art and Cultural Commissioner, and newly announced recipient of the Volunteer of the Year Award for the Chamber. And she happens to be in the audience if she'd stand up. The esteemed artist is here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have, is there a, is there a biographical information or contact information?
There will be an About the Artist post put up there very shortly.
Right, so if people want to contact the artist, they can do that. That's great.
Yes. I aim to embarrass, thank you.
And the theme of the museum is Our Heroes and it's going to be about Harry Hooper, the Hall of Fame baseball player and Capitola's postmaster for many years. So it's going to be not just about Harry, but, but they're spotlighting him and it'll be a lot of fun. And that's a memory, that's a picture of him back there, Kim. Is that Harry in the back? Is that a baseball outfit? Kind of looks, maybe looks like him a little bit. We can-
Harry is a child, perhaps.
The one back there?
Yeah.
It could be. No, those, those are two sisters from, in 1920s, that's the old Stockbridgeville in the background. Well, it wasn't there yet, but that's, that scene right there.
Thank you.
Other council comments? Dennis?
None.
I have a couple of comments. I did want to announce that the Capitola Police Department will be doing a fundraiser for Special Olympics. It will be on Thursday, March 27th, at 5:00 to 9:00 PM at Chili's Grill and Bar, which is at 1855 41st Avenue, that's at the mall. And their program is called Tip a Cop. You can go and have a fine meal and you'll have an opportunity to tip a police officer and your tip will go toward the Special Olympics. So I wanted to promote that on, on behalf of the Capitola Police Department. And I also wanted to, at this time, recognize that we have a Capitola institution that is going to be closing down tomorrow evening, the Capitola Book Cafe. is going to be closing down tomorrow evening, the Capitola Book Cafe. And, you know, I, we're all very sad to see that bookstore leave our community. It is the nature of the times that we live in, but I think it's important for us to, to recognize our, our history and our legacy. So I wanted to just let them know that, you know, that bookstore was founded in 1980 by Gwen Markham, Marcio Ryder, Judy Stenovich and Kathy Kituse. And they have generously donated to the city of Capitola many of their artwork that they have, have had, if you've ever been in there, you'll, you'll, will have seen the artwork along the walls. They have donated several pieces of art which we will very graciously accept and store and ultimately use in our new Capitola library, which I think is a very fitting place as a remembrance of bookstores. You know, I think our kids are going to look back and, and think of them as something of days gone by. So I did want to make an announcement about that and thank the proprietors of the Capitola bookstore for all their years of, of providing us with entertainment and education and inspiration and that we're sorry to see them go. So with that, the City Treasurer, did you have comments?
Nope.
Staff comments? None. So now we'll move on to the consent calendar. These are items that will be taken with a single motion unless any of them are pulled. Council members wish to pull any item? Seen a member of the public that wishes to pull any item?
I would.
Seeing none, Paul, which?
I'd like to pull Mr. Stones, I think that's A9.
Yeah, Paul, that, that is actually not on the consent calendar, but we have moved it up, as soon as we're done with this item, we'll be getting to that one, okay?
Move the, move the consent calendar.
There's a motion, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So now we'll move on to item 9D first, which is the consideration of Assembly Bill 1603, authored by Assembly Member Mark Stone, the Outdoor Environmental Education. Is there a staff report?
Yes, I'll keep it brief. Tonight you're being asked to consider support Assembly Bill 1603 as authored by Assembly Member Stone, the Outdoor Environmental Education and Recreation Program. What this bill will do, will establish a grant-funded program under the Department of Parks and Recreation to fund outdoor educational programs for at-risk and underserved youth. Studies have shown that children who, in science classes who participate in outdoor activities, science education programs, in addition to their classroom program, improve their test scores quite significantly and apparently approximately 27%. So what this bill will do, will establish a grant-funded program that is available to nonprofits and public entities to apply for. And that is my, conclusion of my presentation, I think there were maybe one or two other people who wanted to speak to this item.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there any questions from council members on the staff report? Seeing none, and members of the public would like to address the council on this item?
Thank you very much, Mayor Story and council members, I'm Dan Hayfley of O'Neill Sea Odyssey, and again, I'd like to thank you for your support of our outdoor education program, but also thank you more generally for your support of outdoor education. Nothing is better than nature to supplement book learning for kids. It is the ultimate science laboratory for kids. If it's the ocean, if it's forests, if it's the waterways, wherever it is, it's all there for kids to learn science, for them to integrate the various subjects. In this bill, those programs that align with common core and with science, technology, engineering and mathematics will have priority under this bill. And again, the nature is the place where you see these concepts alive for these kids. This isn't going to supplement book learning, it's not going to replace it, it's going to supplement book learning. So this not only would provide much-needed funding for outdoor education throughout the state, but would also send a signal that the state is behind outdoor education. And again, it's, I, I like to call this the no child left inside bill. It gives, gives kids, I mean, the comment about bookstores, the comment about kids being online, you can get outside and see the real world and it makes a big difference. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dan, for coming in and informing us about this bill. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address us on this item? Yes, come on up, Paul.
This bill's been kind of under wraps for, for, for over 10 years. After attending a military meeting at the Naval Postgraduate School and knowing that four doors realignment would realign with, with the earth today, and now high density is, is caused a factor. And when we started at the Naval Postgraduate School with no civilians, Congressman Farr is there and everybody else is going, "Let's vote this way for the environment." The environment's already changing, you know, we want to, all we want to do is just bring money into it. We want to save Mother Nature. We always have this in our mind, it's Mother Nature that needs to help and mankind. And mankind needs to help Mother Nature, so it needs to kind of come hand in hand. And there's too many nonprofits and everybody else wanting their hands on it. We need to just pick, you know, just the right ones. So we have enough money to take care of the earth. And O'Neill does a great job, too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we support Assembly Bill 1603.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Which will now bring us to item nine, listed item 9A, which is the appeal of a planning commission denial of an amendment to design permit and coastal development permit for remodel in addition to a single-family dwelling in the RM LM zoning district. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is an appeal of the planning commission's decision to deny modifications to the approved design permit for a remodeled single-family residence located at 305 Fanmar Way. The original design permit was approved by the planning commission on June 6th, 2013. In November, staff identified an unauthorized change to the size of the home's front window. Upon further review and consideration, staff determined that the change did not represent a significant modification which required additional planning commission review. In December of last year, the applicant contacted staff to schedule their planning inspection. At that inspection, staff discovered significant changes and notified the applicant that the modifications required planning commission review and consideration. The planning commission considered the alterations at their January 16th meeting and denied the requested modifications. The applicant has appealed this determination and has offered a new alternative design to address staff and planning commission concerns. The project site is located at 305 Fanmar Way, as shown here. The existing residence is located on a double-fronted lot facing Cherry Street to the south and Alley to the north. The intent of the architectural and site review process as established by the city's zoning ordinance is to maintain the character and integrity of the neighborhood by promoting excellence of development and to encourage the most appropriate use of land in harmony with the existing neighborhood. When considering design permits, the decision-maker must evaluate the suitability of the building for its purpose and whether the design includes the appropriate materials to ensure compatibility with the neighborhood. In this case, the building is suitable for a single-family residence, so the issue at hand is whether the design uses appropriate materials which are compatible with surrounding development. To determine whether the proposed design meets the zoning ordinance compatibility standard, staff and decision-makers must consider the existing neighborhood context and whether the proposed design would fit in with surrounding development. This slide shows a picture of the as-built design of the applicant's home. The next several slides will show the designs of surrounding residences along Fanmar Way and the Alley. This slide shows the view down the alley which the applicant's home fronts. The neighboring home shown here is a two-story wood-shingled home with open parking on the ground level. This slide shows the adjacent home on the other side of the applicant's home, which is a one-story home with a stucco finish. This home is another two-story wood-shingled home along the same side of the Alley as the applicant's home. This two-story home is also located along the Alley and features lapboard siding on the first story and wood shingles on the second story. Next door to that house is a stucco-finished two-story home. Across the street along the Alley is a one-story home with lapboard siding with a more rustic finish. This one-story home with lapboard siding is located on Fanmar Way. Finally, this two-story lapboard-sided house is located at the intersection of the Alley and Fanmar Way. As indicated by these previous slides, surrounding residences is represented by a variety of one- and two-story, single-family residences with different, built with, from different eras and with varying forms, architectural styles and exterior treatments. This slide shows the design of the home prior to the remodel and construction versus the current as-built condition. This slide shows the design that was approved by the planning commission, again, versus the current as-built condition. Modifications made from the approved design include changes to the exterior materials from shingles to lapboard-style siding, changes to the size of the front window and elimination of two side windows due to fire code requirements which are not visible in this slide, changes to the garage door from a carriage-style door to a traditional roll-up-style door, an exposed electrical conduit or utility pole, and changes to the railing designs. After review and consideration of the modifications, the planning commission determined that changes resulted in a design which was not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and that the design therefore did not meet the intent of the architecture and site review process as established by the zoning ordinance. Following the planning commission denial, the applicant submitted an appeal with an alternative design to respond to staff and planning commission concerns. Proposed enhancements shown on this slide include replacing the current garage door with a carriage-style roll-up door, adding decorative elements such as a pergola with triangular knee braces, an extended brick planter across the front facade and a trellis with climbing vines. The applicant would also add stained glass postcaps on the railings, install new windows and paint all railings to match. Along the west elevation, the applicant would install geometric railings, add craftsman-style doors and install decorative rafters under the second story to match the roof overhang above. This slide provides a comparison of the pre-existing design, approved design, as-built design and the proposed design from the north elevation. This slide shows the same four perspectives from the east elevation and the south elevation from Cherry Street and finally the west elevation. The City Council may consider a number of options tonight. The council may deny the appeal and require the applicant to restore the design as originally approved by the planning commission. Alternatively, the council could uphold the appeal and approve a permit amendment to allow the as-built design as it sits today. Or the council could review the appeal de novo, consider the additional modifications presented by the applicant and shown here tonight, and approve a permit amendment with modifications as conditioned in your staff report. Staff finds that the applicant's revised design proposal with modifications would be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and would therefore comply with the intent and purpose of the architecture and site design requirements of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council review the appeal de novo and approve a permit amendment with the modifications proposed by the applicant as conditioned in the staff report. Also, following release of the staff report, the applicant has offered to relocate the utility pole to the side of the home adjacent to a rain gutter downspout. Staff believes this would be an acceptable alternative to enclosing the pole as indicated in your report. Additionally, staff would like to correct a statement in the staff report which indicates that the Upper Eves do not have rafters. The Upper Eves do in fact have rafters and accordingly, staff would recommend modifying the condition to require rafters under the second story cantilever as proposed. This concludes staff's presentation.
Questions from council members on the presentation? Yes, Mike.
Did you not mention when you went by the elevation that windows were to be replaced? Did I hear you say that?
The applicant in their latest mittel has offered to replace windows.
And it's-
Is that all windows?
No, it's a single window on the, I'm forgetting the-
The east elevation?
East elevation.
The second story window on the east?
First story, a lot, next to the public staircase that comes along the side of the home. The others. Next one.
It's this one here. Next one, no? It's the north elevation, upper right? And the west elevation, upper?
Here we are. It's the east elevation, upper right.
And which windows in that drawing would be replaced?
I'm sorry to be so specific, but it seems that lack of specificity is what got us into this position, so.
This window right here, it hadn't been replaced due to concern for egress, but we've analyzed that with the building department and it will meet, they can replace that window and not have concerns for egress.
So, my question being that the planning commission had some issues with the type of windows that were used rather than the windows that were shown and scheduled on the original approval?
They didn't. Actually, of, of the modifications they requested, they did allow the windows to remain as they are in the as-built condition.
The planning commission?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I get clarification on the window? On the staff report, item two refers to prior to certification of occupancy, the applicant shall construct, and there's a list of 10 items. And through the staff report, I understand, two of them have been removed, but is that window that we're talking about, item number eight?
Yes.
It is, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there the question, yeah, Mike, go ahead.
I want to ask, you know, I'm, I'm questioning the, the request of the council to do a de novo review of this, when this particular design has not come before the planning commission. I, I think that, you know, we have the ability to uphold an appeal or deny an appeal, but in its present state, being redesigned, wouldn't the third option be to return it in its new design state to the planning commission and not here on it in a pseudo-desiary capacity?
I believe you have, you could make that decision as well.
Okay, thank you.
Just Ed?
One question. If you can go to the west elevation. I'm confused if it's now that the applicant is willing to install the railing, is that the, is that a new concession that was made or was that staff recommendation?
That was a-
On the west?
Yes, that was provided by the applicant.
That's a new concession to, to restore that back to the original plan?
It's an, it's to, to carry the design from the rear elevations to the, to the west elevation, but the-
That was on the original plan?
The original plan showed the original railings that were there before and they were a, more of a Swiss look with a cut-out, a flat.
Okay. I wasn't being specific on the rail, right now it's just lap siding that covers the entire area?
Yes.
And so we're going back to a railing component? Okay, thank you, that's my only question.
What is the railing that looks like it's going to the, to the section to the right where under-approved, it almost looks like that railing goes up a sword stair? I'm not seeing what's happening down here, is that remaining a wall or is that railing proposed to be changed as well? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't know if you can see the mouse pointer, I'm trying to ju, toggle it, it's right in this area here on the-
Yes.
So right now it is just lap siding there?
Correct.
That remains the wall and just the railing is the first two sections?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Dennis?
First of all, I think your presentation of what's there and what's proposed is excellent. My question is, is what's proposed here in the colored rendering that we're seeing on all elevations, is that what we're, is that the applicant's request and that's what we're asked to approve, is that designed, is that on all four, that's pages 89, 90, 91 and 92? Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, with the exception of the power pole going to the west side of the building? That's the only change that we see from the elevation?
Correct.
And have they adequately denoted on these renderings here the finished materials correctly?
We believe they have.
Thank you.
Stephanie?
Are there any view issues, privacy issues with that railing? I didn't go around the back of the house to see, because we do have that to consider. Are they looking into somebody's yard, somebody's house, somebody's windows?
I don't think the addition of that railing would change any privacy issues because right now, they could walk there, there's some lap siding that's maybe four feet tall. So, you know, the eye level is above that railing under the current condition.
And I will just elaborate on that. During the original planning commission review, there was an addition proposed off of the back there that the applicant removed from the application due to privacy issues and concern at the planning commission level for neighbors. So, that was removed by the applicant during the original review of the application.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Is the green color the color that's proposed?
It's a darker green color with an off-white trim.
Sam, I have one more quick question.
Any other landscaping proposed? There's not much there. And did the planning commission talk about that?
Not much dirt showing, is there?
There's not much.
Well, but you can create, you can take out a little asphalt.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot of area. I mean, there's, it fronts right up to the alley. On the other side of Cherry Street, there's a stairway that leads up to the property, and the side yards are very narrow and I don't think provide much opportunity for landscaping.
They are considering taking the planter across the entire front yard though, on the front elevation. And the applicant has talked about doing a lot of landscaping on the Cherry Ave side in the future.
Good, Ed?
Just a follow-up. If he's done.
Yep.
Thanks. During this process, there was some concern about language not being included on the plans, and is there a new policy that we now have with regard to plans being issued and requirements for changes?
Well, as you're aware, we have had some issues with field changes occurring without the planning department's approval, and those applications have gone back before the planning commission and have prompted a lot of concern with the planning commission. So, one of the things that we've done to try to address that is we've created a form that we'll give to our customers when they come to the counter that clearly states that they must build the project exactly as indicated on the plans, and the failure to do so may lead to a planning commission hearing and even removing the features and returning to the original design. We would ask them to sign that and do it before they go to hearing so that we're very clear and they understand the process.
And that language hasn't existed prior to this?
It has not. This applicant was, did not have the benefit of that form.
Thank you.
Dennis?
One question regarding what concerns the planning commission had at their last hearing. In your opinion, did these plans reach and address those issues?
I think the planning commission had a couple of concerns. One was just the nature of the change occurring without any authorization. So, that's why we've gone through the process and why we're here this evening. They did have concerns with the architectural feature of the home not fitting in with the neighborhood. From my perspective, based on the additions that the applicant.
Could you clarify that statement a little bit from, I mean, the photos that you showed? How does this final design not fit into the neighborhood?
I think that the majority.
From the planning commission's standpoint?
I think the majority of the planning commission felt that the siding, the wood shingled siding was more attractive than the lapboard siding that we see there today, that the railings, you know, from this elevation, you can see the top, they've used kind of a glass enclosure rather than the railing style beneath it. They like those better. So, they made a determination that the house as modified was less attractive and therefore was not as compatible with the neighborhood as what was originally approved.
Were those lower deck railings glass before?
No, they weren't.
They were similar to the railings, I believe, on the neighbor's home.
But the elevations we're seeing now proposing to change those railings. We're looking, the drawings that we see here are not the same as what we, what that is right there. Is that true?
No, these are the same. They'll stay the geometric railings. Those are custom geometric railings that were installed.
This is not a rendering or a superimposition. This is an as-built.
That's right. Those railings are not proposed to change, other than, I think they put capstones on them.
The rendering itself makes them look different than they are.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Stephanie, did you get your question answered?
Thank you.
Any other questions on the staff report from council members? See none? I'm going to open up the microphone now. Does the applicant want to address the council? Yeah, please step up.
Yes, my name is Peter Wilk. I am the owner of 305 Fanmar, and thank you for your attention on this matter. I've been schooled in this process. I came to the planning commission on January sixteenth with a completely bad understanding of their charter and, you know, what was to be expected. I came with a drawing or a house that was incomplete. It is shown there, it isn't painted, and excuse my rendering, I know that's a hideous green, but I didn't have a good palette to work with. I did present the actual palette to Katie, if, excuse me, our senior planner here, if you want to take a look at it. But my mistake was that, you know, I had this notion that we were mainly focused on code issues, keeping the neighborhood happy, visual things, you know, fire safety, those kinds of things. So, you know, when I, when we went with the cement board cladding, the shiplap, and deviated from the shingles, in my mind, that was, well, I've got the same material, it's termite-proof, it's, you know, it's fireproof, and I just was not in that, and that was a mistake, but it was an honest mistake in my opinion. So, this as-built drawing is not complete, never was to be intended to be complete. I always tended to work on it. You know, I plan to retire in this home. I plan to become a permanent resident and continue to try to beautify this home through the coming years. I mean, that's my retirement dream, is to work on my, work in my sandbox. And I apologize to the city for presenting an incomplete project. I presented in my appeal what I thought is a good explanation of how I got in that fix, what I did wrong, the mistakes that were made, and I don't, I don't think I can restate that better here. But I do want to mention that since the, I published the appeal or I submitted the appeal on January twenty-ninth, that there has been some changes. I've been working closely with the staff planners to try to come up with something that would be satisfactory to the community. Again, I was schooled, I got the message from the planning commission, I understand their charter, I'm not here to try to undermine their authority or question their judgment. I'm just here to appeal to continue the process. I think what we've come up with, with this new option that the staff has come up with, that they presented moments ago, that I am very happy with that. I worked with them on that approach. I think that's the win-win idea that's going to make everybody satisfied, and I urge you to accept that proposal as Mr. Grunau presented it. I believe that it meets the intent of what the planning commission wanted, and it in fact meets all but one condition. I mean, they requested the new garage door done. That's, you know, that's in the plan. They requested changing that railing back to the way it originally was, and in my defense, the reason I made it lap siding because as I was doing the project, I realized I was staring right into my neighbor's courtyard, and I figured, you know, they had already requested a privacy fence which I installed, and I figured, well, let's just wall it off a little bit, but, you know, if that's not a decorative feature, well, I'm happy to put it back to a railing, that's in the plan. So, I'm trying to meet not just the intent, but as close as I can, the actual ruling itself from the planning commission. The one exception I take is the shingles. That was always a bad idea. I apologize for putting that in front of the commission to begin with. There's a long story as to how that happened, but if the goal is to, here is to meet community standards, I don't believe that changing that shiplap siding to shingles is going to make a significant difference or greatly improve that facade. That is an incredible expense. I, you know, I researched trying to be fully compliant and found out that, well, my contractor spent six, seven weeks putting that siding on originally. It's a huge effort. It involves many corners and windows and sides that you can't even see, and for me to do that, in my estimate, which is in my appeal, is like a $37,000 effort. I don't feel like I can easily comply with that kind of change, and so I ask you to consider removing that stipulation. I've got some neighbors here that are willing to talk to that issue about whether or not siding versus shingles is more appropriate. You know, I've got the neighbor who's right across the street, and she's here to offer her opinion if you'd like it. I also have a neighbor, not a neighbor, but a former tenant of mine who lives on Gilroy Street. She's here to, if you have any questions about the is/was condition, she lived in that house for years before I even owned the facility. I inherited her as a tenant. Unfortunately, had to kick her out, but she's not, she doesn't hold any grudge.
I hope not.
Anyway, the bottom line is, is that I admit I've made a lot of mistakes in this process. It was a learning experience. I apologize for wasting your time and the commission's time. Excuse me, just get a drink of water. But I think the bottom line is that, is that they're honest mistakes, that they were done in good faith, and that going forward, I want to continue to work with the community, make this house the best house it can be. Again, this is my home, I'm going to try to continue to work on it. Denise is here, she's a gardener, not a professional gardener, but she's got a green thumb and she's going to, she's going to work on the Cherry Street side, it's got terrace gardens, and it's going to be a showpiece before she's done, I guarantee it. So, I think the staff has come up with something that is appropriate, and it meets the intent, and it's going to make everybody happy, and I urge the council to take their suggestions because I think that's the best approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on this matter?
I live at 310 Fanmar. I look at the house every day.
Speak into the microphone, please.
I live at 310 Fanmar. I look at the house every day, and I urge you to let him keep the horizontal siding. We walked by numerous of those cement shingle siding houses. In our opinion, they are not attractive at all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Coming around from a builder, I kind of like the shingles. It kind of breaks up everything, but then everybody's, forgot to realize our infrastructure's falling apart right down below, and under enament domain, we're going to be putting sidewalks in sometimes, as in like thirty years ago, they told my mom that, on Hill Street. So, but then, I think the owner's doing a pretty good thing. You know, the shingles kind of just break it up kind of nice and make it pop.
Anyone else?
I'm more of an advocate for the siding. The house on the right has shingles. The house on the left has, it's stucco. So, the siding adds a little bit of a textural difference. In addition, you know, we've gone over paint colors. We're not married to those colors. If the council feels those may not be appropriate, we can revisit that, but I think with the extra touches of the pergolas, the future landscaping, you know, the front planter boxes, that this house is going to pop more, and I think it's going to be fine in the neighborhood. We've done a lot of walking, a lot of assessing of different homes, and it certainly fits within the scope of the neighborhood. I am very confident that when all is said and done, that it's going to have a very nice presentation.
Excuse me, could you introduce yourself to us?
Oh, I'm Denise Salibery. I'm Pete's fiancee.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
The gardener.
Hello, council. My name is Don Sylvie. I live at 307 Fanmar, and I think the changes that are being made are really quite good. I would prefer to see the shiplap stay, even though the project is, shall we say, started off in really bad footing, but I think at least it's going in the correct direction and really appreciate the changes being made. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the microphone. I'll bring it back to council for deliberation and action. Yes, Mike, you want to begin first?
I'll jump in first.
Mike, can I ask a question of the applicant first?
Sure, sure.
Ask you a question, have you come back up? Thanks. Have you ever remodeled a house before?
I have in Fremont. It was, well, it was more of a landscape job, but.
Nothing like this?
Nothing, nothing, anything like this, no.
And I have, thank you very much. I have a question for Katie or for Rich. At, during the final inspection, that's when you noticed that the siding was different? Previously noticed that the windows were different. How about the garage door, when that was framed in? Would you have been able to tell what kind of a door it was going to be at that point? Couldn't have, because they could put in, it was the same size, so the dimensions were the same.
So, the windows were recognized by our building department when they went out to do an inspection for rough framing. At that time, I don't know if the garage door was in. Mr. Wilk had called and asked for an inspection. He wasn't ready for CO. He just wanted staff to put together a bullet list of other, you know, items that he needed to address before we came up for a certificate of occupancy. He was not ready at that point, and he was well aware that he was not ready for a CO. So, it was between the rough framing inspection by the building permit and him heading towards his CO review, but, and at that time, that's when the siding had just been put up, and I believe the garage door had recently been installed. I'm not quite sure on the timing of the garage door.
Do these homes have to be undergrounded? The utilities?
No, underground.
Impossible there?
No, it's possible. It's just not a big enough remodel to do it.
Yeah, and once you improve a home by 25%, if you increase the floor area by 25%, we would require undergrounding, but because the addition.
Was so small.
Yeah, it was so small, we didn't require it.
Okay, and is that the chimney on the far right?
It is.
And are the planter boxes drip irrigated? You can answer that when you come up, or when.
No, they are not.
They're not?
They're not.
That, I think it's an important issue.
They're certainly not going to spray irrigate them in a planter box. They're probably going to watering can them or drip them.
Maybe, maybe not.
And imagine a sprinkler head in there.
Did you have questions?
I do, I have a question of Peter.
Yeah, maybe if you could wait until we get the questions answered, yes.
Peter, now with the experience you've gone through, would you expect the planning commission to demand the same quality to other houses in our neighborhood if they were to rebuild in your neighborhood?
I can't guess what the planning commission's going to do.
Do you understand the function of the planning commission? Is that correct?
I do now, yes. So, could you repeat the question?
I just, you know, quality is an issue here of the products that were used, and you as a land, you as an owner now who's gone through the process that are going to prove your property, that would you expect the planning commission to maintain that quality in your neighborhood? Decision-making process?
I wouldn't. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, again, I don't know how to answer that question. I don't know whether the planning commission would increase their standards or try to maintain my new standards or whatever, but I wouldn't, wouldn't want the planning commission to impose any particular standards on anybody's project.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Steph?
Just another question of staff. Is there room for enclosed trash enclosure?
They did build a wall on the right-hand side of the front facade of the home. It steps back a little, yeah, right there, and the trash will go behind that small wall.
That's good. We should do that whenever possible.
Yeah.
Okay. Mike, you wanna take the floor?
I have a lot of concerns, not the least of which is, you know, letting this become a comment on our system, which this particular process, this appeal, calls our whole system into question. And I think we know that. The planning commission brought it up. I am reluctant to train applicants to always come to the city council if they don't get what they want from the planning commission. Very uncomfortable place to be. I'm uncomfortable potentially demoralizing our planning commission by overturning their decisions on a regular basis, because they do a great job. And I'm really concerned because what I'm seeing here is the third, as we all know, applicant who has had this stumbling block, and I fear that we're visiting the sins of those that came before him on this applicant, and being significantly harder than we were on the first two, and finally getting fed up, and that's it. I've had it with you kids. I'm laying down the law. You know, it just doesn't feel good. I have a real difficulty being seduced into being turned into a junior architect, even though we have a professional designer on the council. This is not the place to design or to get to design elements. You know, that's what our arc and site commission is for and what our planning commission is for. And with regard to fitting in with the neighborhood, would someone tell me what the neighborhood style is on Fanmar? Because I'm still a little confused, okay? I think it's a bunch of really nice houses, and they're all different, and everybody's happy to be there. That's pretty much it. This is a very nice house. It looks good. It's different, and somebody's gonna be happy living there, hopefully the applicant at some point. If I had my choice in this, my preference would be to give a nod to the changes and say, you know, "Well done. This is a great comeback," and to send it to our planning commission for final approval or some such thing. But I'm concerned with running staff around again, running the applicant around again. So I'm sort of on the fence here. I'm not of the opinion that we should just send this person away and make him rebuild this house, but I'll look to the rest of the council for potential fixes here, and still keeping our planning commission buoyant and joyous.
Are there comments? Yes, Dennis.
Coming to the city council is part of our process, and when an applicant has a disagreement with the planning commission, they have the right to take it to the city council, and that's what this person did. What happened in the process, when this came to a denial without prejudice, it almost forced this owner to go to a position where coming to the council. I think the planning commission did the right thing. I think their demand for quality is well justified. I think they did the right thing here. I think that the process, the way it works, it is our position to make this decision and move this project on. And it won't come at any simple cost to this owner to do this. And with that process, it also takes it somewhat off the table or actually puts it in the lap of staff to perform, to actually uphold the conditions that we put on this project. And that is how this process should work. And so we would move the applicant along. We would move it to staff to make final decisions on this. And as far as the elevations go, the new elevations, I think, as the design changes, I think it's as good as the original application that was put in front of us. There are a few things that I would like to demand above what was required, asked by staff, and that is that I think that the two front windows on the north elevation and the upper window on the west elevation, you show the west elevation? Okay, see the upper one? You can see from the street there, the upper left-hand one? All three of those windows should be changed to true grid, true light windows as approved in the original application. That will improve the visual representation. I don't have a problem with a closed handrail being that, design-wise, it doesn't really take away from anything, and it does if they felt that, and the neighbors felt that there was a privacy issue, there's no problem with me with that. The overhead utilities need to be taken off the front of the house, moved to the side, and I think they've agreed to do that. And that in the process of the review or approval of this, the elevations as presented to us stand with those additions. In other words, they have to conform to that. It'll be the responsibility of staff to review all materials before they are placed on the site. In other words, we want to see a design of the garage door. We want to see a design of the arbor, how it's constructed and how that finishes, and also a color board, which I think you already are gonna do for them anyway. Irrigation and planter should be finished in the front. A little bit irrigation they had, they had to finish that. Is there an occupancy right now? Do they have an occupancy permit?
They do not.
There'll be no occupancy until this house is deemed final, with a final from planning? So all the elevations that show true on page 89, 90, 91, and 92 will show true to the finish of the house, without exception, with the exception of adding, again, changing the three windows that are visible from the front street to true grid, true light windows.
Can I make a case for not changing the windows?
Okay.
Because it was the only thing the planning commission didn't ask for.
That's correct.
So I'm kind of on the fence. I know where you're going with it, because that was the original intent. But if the planning commission didn't even object to them, I want to go carefully. I don't know. I just...
No, I'm willing to compromise. I think it would help the house if at least those two front were, but I'm willing to compromise.
All right, we'll see. I just wanted to say that.
Okay. I'm open to any other conditions that a commissioner would like to put with that, but I think that there has been a good attempt by the applicant to rectify the problems, and the quality of design is good on this house, if it's finished as it's shown here.
Yes, Stephanie.
Well, this is very unfortunate that it's come to us, that it wasn't done properly, and that staffs had to spend the time on it, and applicants have to spend time on it, and we have to spend time on it. I think that's a real evolving neighborhood, and that used to be sort of, you know, older homes, and some of them, they've started to be bought and remodeled and increased and upgraded, and, you know, those are all million-dollar homes up there. And to put siding on it, you know, I have a question about that. I like the shingles, but, you know, I think the house deserves more than just that siding. There's not much of a street front, but what there is, I think it should be really nice, really attractive, and that includes new windows. And I think we should have them put in new windows and change those windows above, in the front elevation there, as well as above the garbage containers. And they're gonna change the garage door. We have to get rid of that utilities, as you said, so that that's not visible from the street. The trellis, where you're gonna put planter up there, you know, plants freeze and die. You know, I'm not a believer in using landscape to accent your house or not accent or to hide something that you don't like in your house. It should be, landscaping should be part of landscaping and the lot, not necessarily the house. So build it, and it climbs up there, and then it freezes and dies, and it's gone. So I think I would be in favor of not having the lapboard siding and new windows. It's a beautiful project. I don't care about the color. I don't think we should, the council or the planning commission should particularly tell people what color they can paint their house, because as we know, the commission may say, or we may say, one color, and they paint it that color, and the next month, the applicant will paint whatever color it wants. So that's not something we should be talking about. But I'm sorry this whole thing happened, and hopefully we can make a better project out of it.
Ed?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to compliment the applicant for submitting the changes and what I feel making it a better project. I think that with the exception of Councilman Norton, it's very difficult to make changes or recommendations to houses since it's not our profession. And even with that, speaking with the planning commission, you know, if someone wants to design a home, it should be their prerogative to design their home. There's a home we all see up on the jewel box that has nothing but cactus plant in the front yard. It would probably not be my idea of what I'd want, but it's the right of that person to do what he wants. The terms that are coming up for me are, that got into this, was definition of a significant change. And I think that the planning staff has worked with that to try to expand on that. Now, what is a significant change, so that if something does come up significant, we can address it. I think maybe there were some shortcomings on our part with language or with at least disclosure to people about any minor change, whether significant or insignificant, in whose eyes you're looking at. The builder, obviously. The applicant didn't feel as significant. With the window change, the inspector didn't feel it was significant, but all of a sudden with the siding, it became significant. So I commend staff for adding some language that now will guide a builder through this. I also think that this is, you know, maybe for the planning commission, you know, there was a couple projects prior to this that maybe got away from them, and they felt that they had reached a point where, you know, someone had to pay the price. And I don't necessarily feel that our job is to make anybody pay the price. I think our job is to try to work with all of our residents, whether they live on the other side of the hill now, whether they plan to move here, whether they use local labor or outside labor. That's not our concern. Our concern is that they're gonna build a project that meets the specifications, and for me, I want to place more responsibility in staff and what staff recommends. And if something's gonna get way out of line, then that staff is gonna protect us, and then the planning commissioners give me another buffer. And it was mentioned, you know, it's a shame that it's at this level, because it shouldn't be at this level. But unfortunately, it is, and what I don't want to do is put the applicant through any more torture. I'm looking at the seven homes that are on that street, and I count two stucco, two lap, and three shake. And, you know, if they all had shake, we probably would say that's too much. It's a blend, and there were comments made about that the applicant might be trying to save costs. And I don't know who we are to decide what someone should spend on a house. I know there's some contention about whether people put in wood windows or vinyl windows, and the fact is, is the wood windows are more expensive, but in this ocean atmosphere, they don't hold up. So we shouldn't penalize somebody for using a better product. With regards to the shake versus the lap siding versus the shake, I priced it out, and it's about a dollar a square foot difference. When you consider that most of the work in this project, probably two-thirds of it is labor, I don't think that was a significant cost factor. I think the applicant decided to use a material, and, you know, when it's painted, it's probably gonna look a lot better. I think some of the things with the utility service, you know, that doesn't make the home look good. The applicant's made changes to that. I think adding the rail back is an improvement. I also think that the applicant, when his first proposal, he had a lot of neighborhood concern against this project, and he went on to modify it, and to the point now that his neighbors have come and said, "We like the project." And I know there was a woman that was in here in his first plan that had just bought the house, and she was irate because she was losing her view, which now she's not. So I see this guy as someone who is making, you know, a home for himself. He's trying to get along with his neighbors. The home to me, you know, this, as Councilman Termany brought up, where's the term here? Compatible with the neighborhood. You know, we can drive on any street in Capitola, and it changes from one to the other. I don't think this house is a detriment to this neighborhood. I commend staff for working with the applicant to make the recommendation, and because of what staff has done and because of the latest changes that the applicant has, I would make a motion that we accept staff recommendation. Don't make him change the windows. Don't make him change anything else. Accept staff recommendation and approve this project.
As a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second to the motion. Under further discussion on the motion at hand, yes, Dennis?
Friendly amendment, that the no occupancy until final completion and final by Planning and Building Department. Number two, that the planter and the irrigation be, and the planning be installed in the front of the house as being completed. And number three is as they move the utility pole to the side of the house. Other than that, I can live with a motion if that's the case.
I believe the utility pole is part of the applicant's recommendation, is it not?
It's not represented in the drawings, but it was in the presentation this evening, and we can make that change.
Just for clarification, that what we're approving is the renderings that we are seeing on 89, 90, 91, and 92. Is that correct?
You know, because the renderings don't exactly match, and we always, even with the railing, what I'm recommending is what staff has made as recommendations, okay? Not with the railing. There are about seven or eight changes that are recommended, and I'm just recommending those changes. Everything that was presented in writing, not so much the visual, because the rendering sometimes looks different. I don't think they're making any other...
That runs us into a problem, Ed, because what it does is what they're presenting here is not gonna be what is gonna be finished.
Well, the house is pretty much completed at this point. All the siding is on. The only change is that I believe, and staff, maybe you can help me through this, is the railing is gonna be re-added in those two sections. The utility is gonna be moved to the side. The window is gonna be changed on the west exposure.
East.
East exposure, thank you.
Garage door.
The garage door is gonna be changed to a carriage-style door.
Pergolas.
We've got, I'm fine with the landscaping improvement. I think he's committed to that. He's already said he's got his gardener, so I don't think we're gonna have a problem with that. And I'm willing to, you know, even though I don't know that it's reasonable, just to make this go and to move it on, I'm willing to give you the occupation thing, because I think he wants to get this done and move on. But as far as the railings, I mean, I can see that he probably put clear glass on the top because he wants to maximize the view, and the other railings that are there, they make it a little bit different from the house next door, and I like that it's different from the house next door. And he's gonna add the, is it brass, brass tops, you said, to the...
Stained glass.
Stained glass, okay. You know, I think he's trying to do something.
Let me just clarify my mind.
Yeah.
Can I ask the staff a question then?
Absolutely.
Does the renderings that you have here reflect your conditions of approval?
I created the conditions from the renderings.
Okay, then I'm okay. Because you're saying the same, because we could use in both of them then. That's what your guidance is.
Sam, under discussion after the motion and the second, just a note, and I have to disagree with my good buddy and neighbor, Ed, just in one small point, in that there's a reason why we try and make things a cut above with regard to quality of materials, design of homes. And it's the same, and if I can clarify Dennis's comment, he was asking you, you want to come and retire here, and I know you want us to keep the same standards. No one wants to see T-111 siding, square boxes go up throughout the neighborhoods.
We don't allow T-111.
Yeah, right. What I'm saying is, I'm using it as an extreme example. So that's, and I understand the libertarian in me is cheering with you. I understand that. And yet, it's a special place. We want to make it a little, you know, as special. And with regard to shiplap siding, I am wounded that my million-dollar house has shiplap siding, and I think it's very nice. But yes, and I support the motion, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. You're welcome. Yes, Stephanie.
Just one other comment. I think the windows, all those others, the windows that I mentioned need to be addressed. We just can't let applicants put in different windows other than what are in the approved plans. That, I know the planning commission feels very strongly about this, and that we want to have really good quality windows, and we can have them do that, and they should. And they proposed it in the first place. Why, then they take it out? Why not put that in the condition? not, why not put that in the condition? And also, I understand your comments about, you know, wanting to let the, it's applicant's house, let them do what they want to do. That only works up to a point. And then the review bodies come in to make sure that is something that we review with the community in mind. And yes, it sounds like it might be a lot of power to tell people to change their windows or to change their landscaping or things like that. And I know we get into minutia sometimes here, but I think it's that Planning Commission roles is extremely important, and our role is extremely important.
Thank you, Stephanie. Yes, Ed, do you have a-
Just a couple rebuttals. First of all, I do want to notice that the applicant did on the backside of the property go to some length to put board and batten, just to mix it up. So there is a different look. And I did walk around the house and I do appreciate that. And with regard to the windows, the Planning Commission had no problem with the windows. Did the Planning Commission accept, correct me if I'm wrong here, they accepted the windows?
I don't know if I would characterize as they had no problems. Some individuals felt strong, were stronger than I was about the windows, but it did not make into the motion to change out the windows.
Thank you for wording that correctly. It wasn't one of their conditions of change.
Correct.
And that's why I'm not, and I don't want to micromanage at this point what was done. If it was, if that was okay, that's my point. And, you know, there's projects in this town that, I'll bring up one project that, you know, comes to mind, was, there was an old church up on Depot Hill that was being built. And as far as I'm concerned, in my short tenure in this town, it's probably one of the finest remodels ever been done. And that project went through hoops and hoops because I felt so many people that were behind this desk were making decisions, getting in the way of a homeowner, making an absolutely gorgeous statement in the town. And, you know, that's an extreme of where someone spends, you know, tremendous amount of funds. I don't feel that this home, when this applicant gets done, is going to be something we're going to be embarrassed of, and that's why I made the motion to approve.
My recollection was that that sailed through pretty smoothly. The only thing that we discussed was the fence out in front.
Yes, okay. Let's not talk about that project. And to try to move us forward here, I'm going to have some last words myself on the process. And I really want to start by thanking the Planning Commission for working hard to, you know, ultimately approve a project that for the most part fits in with the community, is accepted by the neighbors. And to me, that's the big point, is because mostly what we hear on projects are neighbors coming in and complaining about the nature of the development and the impositions that it makes upon them. I have not heard that this evening. It's actually complimentary. So congratulations to the applicant. And also, I mean, for your effort to come in and improve a home here, no easy task. To me, there were miscommunications along the pathway here, and we got tripped up on some minor issues, and that's why it's come up to the council. But as Dennis said, that is part of our process, and I don't think that we should shy away from it. Sometimes reasonable people can disagree, and that's why we're here to kind of work through and iron out those issues and, if need be, make a final decision. And I think that's what we need here, is a final decision. In my, you know, view of it, this project, even with the siding as it is, not being the shingles, it retains the character and integrity of the neighborhood. I mean, if, just from looking at the pictures and as Ed pointed out, it provides variety. There's diversity up there, I mean, almost in every neighborhood in Capitola. And to me, that is part of the uniqueness and I think, and the look and feel of Capitola is the individual character. And I don't think this is a question of substandard materials. To me, it's a question of aesthetics. I don't know if all the aesthetics are to my liking, but it's not my job here to impose my aesthetics on, you know, private residents who want to, you know, build their retirement home in our community. So with that, and I think the last point, and I think there is a lesson here for us about maybe some things that we need to do to make sure that we can avoid these situations from coming up less frequently. They are going to come up, you know, in the context of a very dense community that's already built out. We're doing a lot of infill. We're doing a lot of improvements. We live very close to one another. Things come up, but this is where they get resolved. So I want to thank everybody for participating in this, working through these issues. We have a motion and a second to-
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Was this noticed to the neighbors?
Yes.
Okay. Did you get any calls or any emails or any comments about it?
When I was out on set, I had positive remarks from neighbors. I did have a few people stop by the counter and voice concerns, but nobody wanted to put anything in writing for the review.
Okay. And Sam, you can't get fooled by people saying it's their retirement home. I've seen more homes here when people said that and they were sold, you know, a couple years later. I mean, that's, I mean, that's a nice idea and it's a nice hope, but we can't rely on that information at all for our decision because, you know, it just doesn't happen sometimes.
Yeah, that was just the representation. I'm willing to take it, you know, on face value. And I know life changes, and so, you know, things don't always work out the way we intended to be. But for me, that doesn't necessarily change the integrity of, you know, this particular design, this particular home, and how it fits in with the neighborhood up there. So with that, I'm going to call the question. I think what I would like to do is, just so that Sue can get the votes, is to call for a roll call vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Harlan?
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Councilmember Botter?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Mayor Story?
Aye. Motion passes four to one. We will now move on-
Sam, can I make a short statement at the completion of that?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I would like to request that staff look at its policy regarding the review procedure of conformance of homes and designs approved by the Planning Commission and staff, and come up with maybe a different method where we actually take a visual look at homes and process during the construction process from the planning point of view, that we have a safeguard of a house getting too far along and taking these steps. So if you can look at that policy, I think that would be helpful.
Sure, thank you.
Having that written statement is really good. That signed is really good.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. We'll now move on to item nine B, which is approval of the Art and Cultural Commission 2013-14 Annual Report. Lisa.
I'll wait just a minute, let people clear out.
My planning commissioner just said that you did a good job. She said you did a good job.
I don't think mine's going to say that.
Probably not.
All right, Council.
Good, thank you.
It's my pleasure to present to you the Art and Cultural Commission's 2013-14 Annual Report. This is one of those different kind of presentations. I'm in a tag team with Councilmember Termini and I'll play the vanna to your, you know, Jack say Jack. I'll do the turning of the slides. But it is a great accomplishments that we had this year with a number of events. It's probably the funnest committee that the city has, and it provides one of the best forms of free entertainment to our community at the least possible expense. So I think what I'll do is I'll have you go through and I'll show some slides, and then we'll do sort of a brief rundown of what accomplishments were from last year.
Absolutely, absolutely. Roll it. You all know what our charge is, and it's to help our city be more artistic, more cultural, to bring more fun to the community, to bring more appreciation for art. And we are constantly working for new things to do. Our new kiosk, which was truly a home run, it was a bargain in all senses of the word, the bronze, one-of-a-kind statue on the top, done by a very accomplished artist in Oregon. Our Wednesday concerts, the rotating art in our council chambers. A few people come and see us on Wednesday nights, as you can see. Our favorite, the now famous extra-large concert by Gail's Bakery every year draws several thousand people to our beach. We have our Art at the Beach program, which, not only do we have music every Sunday for the Art at the Beach, and the music is fully funded by a sponsor, but the Art at the Beach program is zero cost to the city. The booth fees for the artist takes care of the payment to our coordinator and the advertising, so it is a perfect storm of fun. Movies at the Beach also are fully funded by sponsors. We have moved the movie screen from the beach, I'm sorry to say, to the bandstand because it's harder for the wind to blow the screen down on the bandstand than it is on the beach. We've had to cancel several movies on the beach, but people seem to still come and enjoy it. Children's art projects during the Art and Wine Festival, as well as the Begonia Festival, are run by the Art and Cultural Commission. It is subsidized by money from sale of T-shirts for supplies. Again, zero cost to the city. This is our latest project that the council approved, and these are pictures of our surfboards and the sails to the schooners being assembled, constructed in Northern California. Do we have any more pictures of that particular one, or is that it? Oh, we don't.
The footings have been poured, so just a little brief update. They're done. Ours was down here this last weekend to inspect and see, and we're moving forward.
And I think we had a picture, and you can even check on the Art and Cultural Commission's site, of someone laying down, that's a really large stained glass surfboard. It looks small, but it's not. Our goals for 2014, we have several new commissioners, and we're enjoying their input. It's a very robust, come on down to one of the meetings sometime, you'll really love it. It's a meeting like none other. We have, I believe we have some new projects. Some of them are in the far future, some of them are actually underway now. Do you have a slide with the future projects, or is that-
Well, I don't have a slide of the future projects.
Let me mention, one of the projects that we have in your staff report under future, which is actually underway right now, are the climbable sculptures in Upper Estelnud Park. In other words, large-scale bronze sculptures, hopefully three of them, of sea creatures, we think, up on the grass, that kids and adults alike can climb on top of. We have the chair for the Art Selection Committee in the audience, Nathan Cross, very active member of our Art and Cultural Commission. We have two members, actually, of the Art Selection Committee, and we hope to bring that to you in the next several months. Questions, Council? Stephanie?
Could you add to your future list the cement wall on Capitola Avenue that Dennis suggested by Hill for a mural?
It is on our list as well as the cement wall on Park Avenue. We love cement walls. And evidently, the fellow who rolled his car on Capitola Road loves the murals too because he just couldn't keep his eyes off of it when he was making his left turn.
I think that's it. One last plug for all of our sponsors. We have some pretty amazing sponsors that keep the concerts. All twelve of them are sponsored, and the movies, that's a really important piece of our program to keep it alive. So if you're interested in becoming a sponsor, it's very difficult to get in and break in on that gig, so you get a lot of good stuff for that.
And of the twelve concerts, we only have three open spaces left before we've even asked anyone to be sponsors. So we have filled nine of them already with previous sponsors. Gail's Bakery, Paradise Grill, Stockton Bridge, I won't leave anybody out. The Zeldas do one, yeah, I think.
Zeldas.
DevCon Construction, Britannia Arms.
Lanai Financial.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think the lady at Lanai has picked up a concert right away.
Yes.
Yes. So it's a feel-good. We are celebrating our thirtieth year of free Wednesday night concerts this year. It is truly amazing. We have become famous for it, and the Art and Cultural Commission is proud to be part of the process.
We used to have the Watsonville Band, and that was really fun.
The first concert of every year, the Watsonville Band.
They would march in down Estelnud.
Yes.
Very impressive. Thanks for all your great work, Mike.
It's nothing but fun. I'd like to tell you that we sweat and slave on the Art and Cultural Commission, but it is not the case. It is big fun. And Nathan's raising his hand. Nathan, why don't you come up and speak with us?
Has Wells Fargo reserved a concert yet?
No, but they should, and I think the finance department should ask them.
So I just wanted to mention that we also have our annual retreat scheduled, in which we will do some forward thinking about where do we want to go with the Art and Cultural Commission, what kinds of projects do we really want to put forth, and continue to look at how we operate and how we expend the funds that certainly impact the community in a wide, wide, wide way, not only through the Wednesday night concerts, things going on on Sundays, but also through the art that you can see that is available to everybody to observe and see. The other part is that we're building, in the process of building, an app. And Mike, I'll just let you speak a little more to that because you're more involved in that.
Jenny Shelton, one of our Art and Cultural Commissioners, has taken this on as her own project and developed a committee, which I'm on. And there'll be an art app, which we have coordinated with the museum, so that people will be able to see a map of Capitola on their iPhone. They'll be able to find the different public art pieces and tap that part of the map, and it will bring up pictures of the art they can go to. They will also be able to go to different historic places in the city, and they'll see the historic home or historic building that was on that site, and they can superimpose that picture with a real-time photograph of what it looks like today. So it's called the Then and Now feature. It's really brilliant. We were lucky to get an app developer from out of town who has done this already for another city and did it practically for free for us. So it's really wonderful, and talk about forward thinking. Sometimes we think so forward that we meet ourselves coming the other way. It is truly, it's such a robust committee, you would, anyone here should come down and sit in one of our meetings. It's a remarkable group of people.
Stephanie?
It would be fun to put the historic tree walk on there also, that there was a woman who years ago developed a map with all the historical trees in Capitola, and it's a lovely little map. Think that we should resurrect that, and we should print those up again and put them in the museum or have them at City Hall or wherever, and in the senior center, Jade Street, wherever, and then put that on there. Because it's a neat, it was a lot of work went into that, and it was, that was a really neat project.
That may be one of our upgrades, and we are going to debut the app at the Open Streets event. When you go to the Open Streets event, you will be able to go to the kiosk, and there'll be a QR code, if everyone's familiar with those, the little square block of, you know, indecipherable markings, and you can scan that QR code and get our app immediately. So it's a big fun time. And like our page on Facebook, Capital Art and Cultural Commission.
Ed?
Just a question. Is the signal box on Capitola and Forty-first going to be repainted?
Yes.
And maybe we might take the other one and use it as a fundraiser of some sort.
We could auction it off.
Does the insurance company pay for the repainting of the box?
I don't know.
Should?
Should the driver?
Yeah.
Who sent it to its early grave?
Steve, you want to?
No, I think the police is still working on getting me an insurance company to talk to, so we'll see what we can get.
One question. When are the four ladies on the side of the police department going to come down?
We are going to discuss that at our retreat, about an appropriate replacement for that. We'd like to see something, and we may defer to Public Works because one of the reasons those ladies were put there to be eye-catching, not an eyesore. They look very good in their small format in the museum, but I understand. It was made to catch people's attention, to get them into the parking lot. So we will revamp that and probably work with Public Works. We'll talk about it at our retreat.
Maybe scaring people away from the parking lot.
Maybe, maybe not.
So I want to ask if there's any members of the public that would like to address us on this item, the report?
Well, it seems like you guys are doing a pretty good thing, but it seems like we're going a little too forward still. We haven't thought about the infrastructure. We keep on skipping about everything else. But then, I'm just- We keep on skipping about everything else, but then, I'm just so darn tired. It's just, like you said, you gotta step on the city council meeting to, to understand, and, and I am. And I'm glad I did the right thing when I remodeled my mom's house, working with, with it as a project developer and everything like that. And you guys are doing a great job. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else seeing none? I'll close the microphone, I'll bring it back, um, and is there a motion to approve the Art and Cultural Commission's annual report?
I'll move to accept the report.
Second?
This motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, which will bring us to item, um, C, just to consider the approval, the design of the Esplanade-Stockton Avenue intersection improvements, and authorize advertising the project for construction bids. Steve?
Good evening, council. Short little background on the project, this is a new project that was concluded for the first time in the, uh, current capital improvement program. The scope of the project is, uh, the main emphasis of it is to improve pedestrian safety of the crosswalks on Stockton Avenue going to the Esplanade, and, uh, we're going to take advantage of that and try and replace, keep continuing to replace old sidewalk with new village sidewalk. Uh, this is a plan sheet showing the entire scope of the project. This is obviously Esplanade here and Stockton. Um, we do have sidewalk project going around this building that is all very old and dilapidated, dilapidated sidewalk in this area. This is where we currently have planters. Public Works, who's always like those planters, they're easy for them to maintain, so we're going to maintain those, but we are going to make this a concrete bulbout in this area. I've actually got a blow-up, um, that'll talk about in the intersection. Why don't I just go to that? Looking at the intersection itself, currently there are two crosswalks that go across Stockton Avenue, one, um, by the, uh, lighthouse that's there, and one by Pete Hubick's old place that goes through, um, right up here. This project would eliminate both of those and put a new, single crosswalk in the middle. The intersection would hit this bulbout, um, coming here. Uh, so by eliminating one of the, uh, crosswalks, which actually will help people get through there, um, people and cars, you know, you, you watch somebody in this crosswalk go through, you're not really looking at this one. So I think condensing it to one crosswalk will be a big benefit. We're adding a median island, so that the crossing will be shorter, you'll just have to cross one tra, lane of traffic at a time. If somebody's going, you'll have an area. We'll put in the new, um, signs, uh, pedestrian warning signs and symbols on the sidewalk. We looked at putting in the, you know, the lighted sidewalks that, or crosswalks that we have on Capitola Ave. Truly, those are for larger intersections. I really don't think it is necessary here, certainly get council's feedback on that. Um, we like the idea of just making this a narrow ten-foot quarter that the cars have to pass through, slow them down, um, having a raised island there will, should increase the visibility of pedestrians in there. Um, we are adding palm trees on this side. There's existing palm trees already on this side, and you can't, if I go back a picture, um, there's palm trees that were put in front of the Margaritaville building already. So we weren't going to add any palm trees. Streetlights are existing streetlights at this corner, and up in here, we will be adding a new streetlight on the opposite corner where there isn't any currently right now. Besides that, um, I think that's it. Um, the project is estimated to cost about a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars based on this design. Um, we will place for advertising in March, warden early April, and try and get it done before summer starts. Our recommendation are to approve the design or provide direction if you have any changes you want to be made tonight, so that it can complete the final construction drawings and authorize the budget and advertising for bids.
Dennis?
I'm so happy to see this going forward. Wow. Two things. One is, can you go back to the mouse, Steve? Is there room, um, going towards the bridge for a, a car to go around the stacking lane for the turn onto the Esplanade? Is that going to be a problem? Because that's what happens, you have a bottleneck.
Turn, the Esplanade's up there.
No, Esplanade's right here.
The Esplanade's down below.
Yeah, but the turn for the Esplanade's up there.
I know, but see where, look at where the car would be sitting.
We're maintaining the two lanes here. There's the left turn lane and the through lane. Is that what you're talking about?
If you're answering my question, that, that's fine.
Okay.
So you, if a car was sitting in the turn lane there, he's not going to be over far enough where a person can't go around him?
No. No, we are maintaining the, the two lanes there.
My, my next question is, is that it's severely unlit there, that, do we have really the right kind of lights? I mean, regardless of how, what kind of design we want, it, it, these two on this side here do not give a lot of light out. Is there some way that we can increase the amount of light that comes from any of that intersection?
Yeah, we should be able to do that. I can look into that. This one in front of Stockton Bridge Grill is actually, uh, it's been out for the last couple of weeks, I'm trying to get it relit, so that'll, that'll help. But yeah, I can look at increasing the outage.
Would there be any, would there be any purpose to actually get one across on the lighthouse corner?
Um, well, we're, we are going to take out the handicap ramp that kind of feeds this corner here, um, so I'm hoping everybody goes here. From a visibility point, um, I mean, that's really your, your call. I, I think having the light here will, will provide, will do the most to light up this intersection at this point.
I, I don't think you could ever get it too lit. It's just one of those intersections that, because of the way the sun sets, um, late in the evening, um, fog, different things, the elements happen all, all the time there, mixture of cars and things, that the more light we can get on the intersection, the better.
And the other side of the Stockton Bridge as well, that, that crosswalk over there, I know it's a little off the subject, but that's really dark.
Okay.
Maybe a beacon in the lighthouse house.
That would be good.
No, there was a condition of approval not to have that. Okay, so I'll let you know that.
Steve, um, have the, um, the businesses and residents nearby there, they've been noticed about?
We did notice, um, some of them for this meeting. Uh, be happy to go and kind of walk around and show them and talk to them about this before we proceed further.
I think from my recent lessons on Park Avenue, it would be important to do that, to see and, see if there's, what kind of input there may be. Mike, you want to go ahead?
No, I think Nathan's going to bring up the point that I was going to do, so I'll, I'll let it go.
I have a couple of questions, yeah. Have we sought partnership arrangements with the other businesses like we just did on the Esplanade with the businesses that front here?
We have not. Reason being is that they approached, well, at least it started with, uh, the businesses approaching us on the Esplanade sidewalk project. This was one that was put in the capital improvement program as it was, um, fully funded. Typically, we don't go searching for partnerships, uh, for our capital improvement projects.
No, I don't know if there's a question for the city. What's our, what's our position? What's our status on if we do partnerships with some businesses and then fully funded for others? What's our exposure, our position, our liability? How does that work?
Well, normally, uh, if you were going to do, go into a, like a cost-sharing agreement, it's done pursuant to a contract, and you adjust the liability and, um, through the con, contract. In other words, if you want to induce, uh, a property owner to participate in a, uh, capital improvement, the property owner, rightfully so, is going to ask the city, uh, to indemnify him and hold him harmless, you know, in case there's any accidents there, and they're sued over the design of the, uh, public improvement or something of that nature.
Maybe I put that out wrong. I wasn't trying to confuse you, John. My concern here is, we did a project in front of Beach House Rentals, and we got a fifty percent partnership, and we just did a project in the Esplanade, we had a fifty percent partnership, and now we're going to do a project where we're not going to request anything, and I just wonder, how is that fair to the businesses that participated? I'll take an answer from the attorney or the city manager, doesn't matter.
Yeah, well, I can take a swing at it, and you can let me know if I'm getting myself in legal hot water. You know, I, I think that there's, from a legal standpoint, I think we're fine. From a consistency standpoint, it's a challenge with, with sidewalks. It's been a challenge for the city for a long time. There are situations where there's a dangerous condition that's identified by the city, and we order people to repair them. Uh, there are also situations where the city pays a hundred percent of the cost to do sidewalks, particularly in the business district, and then there are examples on the Esplanade recently where we did a fifty percent match. The difference, as our Public Works Director pointed out, was that this was a project that was identified by the city council, was funded through the CIP process. That project came up, um, and was proposed by some of the business owners down there, and so was funded midstream. That, to us, is a big difference. Um, to the individual business, they may not see that distinction. So it certainly is a challenge, and it's something that I think, you know, we would look for the council to give us direction on, but I know that the city has had trouble with this and has struggled with this in the past about who's paying for what with sidewalks.
Okay, just, I'll go back to questions, and we, just, because I know we're going to talk about it. Going on the drawing, um, there's no, um, existing curb in, I'm going in front of Cafe, Village Creamery right now, that, that section, and my question, and it just kind of brings in, uh, with Councilman Norton's...
That's this area, right?
Yeah, that's, well, I'm actually talking about the, the frontage. As we get up close to where, um, I think where Wine Time is, right there, it widens, and the sidewalk is, I believe, maybe ten feet. And so my question is, is it possible, and is there enough width in the street to widen that all the way up to the corner of the Creamery, so it's consistent with that width of the sidewalk that we have as it approaches Stockton? And in doing that, as I noticed the traffic pattern through there, we all noticed it, the significant amount of cars are in that right lane, and it would probably behoove us to make that a right-turn-only lane with a line so they could line up there. It would mean we would have to remove that twenty-four-minute parking place, and I, I need, something we need to talk about, but I, I, my concern is that, as you see up there at the top, it's wide, and if, and I, the only question, my question is, is there enough width in the street to allow us to widen that and still maintain what would be four lanes of traffic? That's, I guess that's the question.
It's pretty tight there.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't have the dimensions on this drawing, and I could certainly look at that and, and get, give me direction to make that sidewalk as wide as we practically can. Um, I can move forward with that.
Okay. I'd have to second that idea about the, the cars parked on the right in front of Wine Time, because during rush hour, those cars, those cars not being there make all the difference in the world with the way the traffic flows.
Total circulation enhancement if that isn't there, right? But, but we need the width, because Dennis's point is valid, that we need to have, because this, I, first of all, I love this plan, okay? What it's going to do with that single sidewalk is going to do that, but just questions only, we'll see.
So can, um, just to clarify the last comment, we're talking about removing that twenty-four-minute zone, is that, is that the traffic improvement you mentioned?
There's, there's a couple of spaces there, I think it's more than one. Is one of them a regular space?
I think there's just one space on that whole block.
I don't know, but the merchants are very sensitive about twenty-four-minute zones, so I'm, maybe, is there a way to make that, you know, no parking from three to six or something? I don't know, just...
That's something we could look at.
That's all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Dennis?
You know, on the other side of the coin, um, as far as paying for sidewalks, Pat Kearns at the lighthouse paid all the way corner to corner by himself with ramps and everything, way beyond his property, and then Peter Dwares brought it all the way from the mercantile up on the other side, and those were paid for in the private sector. So we kind of have a balance, you know, there, there's different ways that we, that we've done these projects, and obviously, when you have a project that's coming through a process, you're put in the position of paying for it. And I don't think that we've ever deviated from that, from that policy there, have we, Steve? It's pretty much...
No, I, that's what I said, it's, it's projects that the city's promoting, we've typically paid for.
Stephanie?
Probably not enough time, but any opportunity to do memorial bricks there, as we did in the, the other parts of the sidewalk?
Well, we could look at, actually, the, um, there's interest in kind of reviving the memorial brick program for what the work that's going on right now in the Esplanade, um, and I think we could, uh, probably fold that, this into that too. I wouldn't want to wait for that program to get going, we can put in, my plan right now is to, you know, on the Esplanade, we're going to get the bricks in, and then we can pull them out and put in the memorial bricks at a later time, but I think that's a good idea.
Chamber did talk about that, Steve, about starting that program up again.
Yeah.
It seemed to be very popular when we did it before, and that was quite a few years ago, so it might be nice to do it again for all the, yeah, for all the people that didn't, um, participate last time, or new people that are in town that would like to participate.
More questions, Sam?
Sure.
Go ahead. Steve, how, how is the crosswalk marked? How visible is that going to be?
So it's going to have, the big things I think it's going to have are these triangular yield signs that are going to be five feet set back from the crosswalk.
Okay.
Um, you see those, Santa Cruz has quite a bit of them, we don't have any in town yet. So that's the, the first thing you see before you get to the crosswalk, and then it's going to just have the standard piano key striping that we've done on, on, on other places.
And then when you get to the middle, is that ramped in the middle, too?
Yes, this will, so this whole bulbout will be at the level of the, um, sidewalk, um, around Margarita, so you'll come up here, if you want to continue down the Esplanade, you'll go, um, this way, if you want to cross and go to the other side of the street, you would cross here.
But on the island, the island is actually, is it, is it, it's a raised island?
It'll be a raised, yes, it'll be a raised island.
So there's a divot, there's a divot right there for it?
Yeah, yes.
For a wheelchair?
Yeah, there'll be, and we'll be removing the handicap ramp that is in this sidewalk, existing one.
Great plan, Steve.
That's exciting.
Any other questions? Yes, this is a nice one. Steve, Mike, um, the poured concrete, it's going to match what's in front of Margaritaville on both sides, and...
We will pour the village color. We pour the village color twice, and it never matches, but yes, yes, we will, that is the plan.
Yeah, okay.
It will be Sierra Tan.
And no more, no more of the aggregate that...
No, no, this is all the village project with, with the brick bands in it.
Great, all right. I'll, um, ask if any member of the public would like to address the council on this? Yeah, Nathan?
Yeah, it's unusual for me to speak so many times, so I apologize, but I just really want to commend you for taking a look at this, because I do believe that it is a hazardous crossway, and it does impede traffic, and this will improve things. I do want to comment on Dennis's, um, comment about lighting. Uh, these two crosswalks will definitely enhance traffic flow, but one of the things that I would have a concern about would be the crosswalk that's down by, um, the other side of the bridge, and that that is very dark, and it's very difficult to see people, and I've seen people come very close to being hit. I don't know if anybody's ever been hit there, but it's a very dark area. So if there's one that needs to be lit more, that would be one, and the other question I would have is, if we're going to have this, why do we need that one too? That's another discussion for maybe, um, Parking and Traffic Commission. Um, the other point I want to make is, and Dennis and I have discussed this, Mike and I have discussed it, and Steve and I have actually discussed it, is the crossing here at the corner by, um, the Taqueria, and here at, here at the council chambers, and that there is no really safe place to cross. Yet, it's very interesting, on this side of the street, we have crossing from the Yellow Home to City Council Chambers, but there's nothing crossing the street going the other way, and I believe that's something that can be looked at and done, um, with, so that it would increase the number, or the safety of the number of people who cross that road when they've gone to get something to eat, or crossing to come over here to the council chambers. Believe it or not, they don't go all the way down by the fire department to cross, to come, to come across the street to come here. So that's something also, I think, to look into and consider, and maybe direct, again, the Parking and Traffic Commission to look at that. And Mike, I'm not sure if those are any of the two things you were talking about.
I thought you were going to talk about the, the potential, and I know there's just going to be planters for now, but the Art Commission really likes islands and bulbouts and things, so we may come up with something to put in that bulbout besides those big planters sometime in the future.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Miss? This is your opportunity, Kim. Okay, well, I'll, um, close the mic, microphone, I'll bring it back to council for deliberation and action.
I'd like to move this project, well done, and also, um, keep a close eye on that, on the elimination of a couple of crosswalks. Great idea, way to go. Maybe we can do something with the double crosswalks on Cap Ave, a little further down Stockton, because one of those should go away. Because that's another place where we don't have a traffic problem, we have a pedestrian problem. That's it, and I so move.
Is there a second? There's a second. Any further discussion?
I have a couple of comments I want to make. First of all, I commend you on the removing the, the one crosswalk. You know, from the Parking Commission days, that was a thing we wanted to do. I think this is going to be a great asset to get people on the business side of the Espinade safely, and I'm all for whatever kind of lighting enhancement Dennis recommended. It's, it's great. I would really like to stress that we look into that widening so it's contiguous, okay, to check that dimension on that, and if we have to bring it back to us for staff, make a recommendation on removing that 24-minute place, that 24-minute parking, if that's the proper way to do it, that would be a reasonable trade-off in my mind to, we're not going to change that cut-through traffic, and it would fill that lane all the way, and if we could do the four lanes, that would be great. And the only other thing I would like to bring up is that if there's a way, somebody has the magic, is, is that as I look at all these improvements, we pretty much bring the village concrete contiguous to a huge area, with the exception of David Ling, that intersection, if you can, I don't know if you can...
It's not on the map, I'm sorry.
Bring your finger up.
Up in this area?
Yeah, the David Ling corner wraps around, it probably comes about 20 feet of the village concrete, and so there's only a section of about maybe 40 feet that would need to be repaired, and I don't know if we could approach him at a partnership, or, you know, I mean, like we did last time, I don't know if anybody, but I mean, it would seem that that would tie up that entire area there, all the way to the bridge would be all new concrete, and there's lack of curb and gutter, so that would, would really enhance the area. But, but the main concern I wanted to read, to review is that, that widening there to that, if we can accommodate that, I think it would be a tremendous improvement. Other than that, it's, it's, it's a great project.
Right, thank you. Excellent suggestions, Ed. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Right, thank you, Steve. Which brings us now to item 9E, which is Consider Resolution to Apply for Proposition 84 Grant for the Preparation and Design Guidelines and Sustainable Development Initiatives. Staff report?
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. As the council recalls, Proposition 84 was passed in 2006, which provided $90 million for local agencies to prepare sustainability plans. In 2010, Capitola applied for and was awarded $100,000 grant, which we use for general plan sustainability components. The third and final round of RFPs was just released. Grant applications must be between $50,000 and $500,000, and would require a 10% local match. So staff has looked at the grant criteria and has tried to identify some projects that would qualify for the grant funds. The first that came to mind that we'd like to propose to you tonight is for some additional work on our Climate Action Plan. As you recall, the Climate Action Plan is part of the general plan consultant contract, however, there's components of that work that are not paid for with the consultant contract. Principally, the staff time that we put into getting that plan prepared and adopted would not be covered, and that'd be, grant money would be a good way to offset some of the city costs for that work. There is also going to be a need for considerable public outreach and coordination with the Commission on the Environment, the Planning Commission, and City Council, and again, that grant would qualify to cover the staff time necessary to do those, do the outreach. We also have a need to do some additional transportation modeling. When the consultant contract was drawn up in 2010, there was the idea that Ambag was going to do all of the necessary modeling in the region, including transportation modeling. That never came to pass. Ambag does not have the money nor the resources to do transportation modeling, and that is a necessary component for us to complete the Climate Action Plan. One benefit that I would point out to doing the transportation modeling is it also enable Capitola to qualify for some sequence streamlining provisions under Senate Bill 226, which could benefit some of the larger projects, hotels, things of that nature, if they come in in the future, rather than doing a mitigated negative declaration or even an EIR, they could qualify for certain exemptions. As part of the Climate Action Plan, we'd also like to do an implementation appendix. Essentially, what this would do is provide a cost-benefit analysis for the various emission-reduction targets, so that we can focus our limited dollars towards the action items that give us the most bang for the buck. We'd also try to establish some city priorities and implementation schedule, and try to promote cost-effective actions. The anticipated grant amount for this would be $90,000. If the council directs us to move forward, we will finalize that amount and submit the grant. It could go up or down, but $90,000 is our best guess this evening. One other project the council could consider adding to the application would be for the preparation of residential and commercial design guidelines. This is not a current community development priority, however. We have lots of planning work to do, limited staffing. Nonetheless, it is an action item in the draft general plan. If the council so desired, we could begin work in the next two or three years on those guidelines, and like I said, it is something that we're planning to do, just not any time in the immediate future. This grant does have a lifetime of three years where the work is supposed to be done, so that would be one thing to keep in mind. If we were to go after the grant for design guidelines, it can only be used for sustainability components, the staff time and consultant support to develop those, public outreach, adoption proceedings, and the like. We would anticipate the cost for sustainability portions of design guidelines surrounding the neighborhood of $120,000. Our recommended action for you tonight is that the City Council directs staff to apply for an approximately $90,000 Prop 84 grant for Climate Action Plan activities. Alternatively, should you choose, you could also direct us to apply for an approximately $210,000 grant, which would include the residential and commercial design guideline component. And that concludes staff presentation.
Any questions?
I, I just have one question, and it is where my vote is hinging, and that is, I will not vote for this if it's used to backfill payment to our general plan consultant. If we're going to use this money to pay for staff time to develop our own sustainability program, to help the Commission on the Environment have their input, that's fine, but to pile more money into the general, into the general plan pot, not interested. I don't care if the money's free or not.
The only component that I would recommend putting into that contract is for modeling. It's a highly technical, you know, process that staff does not have the capacity to do. Whether we use grant monies to do it, or city monies, if we're going to get a Climate Action Plan, that modeling has to be done. It's not in their scope of work. In my perspective, I'd rather ask, or use grant monies than city dollars to do it.
What's the cost for the transportation modeling?
We haven't put it out to bid. My guess has been the $10,000 to $20,000 neighborhood range.
Of the total, $10,000 to $20,000 that you're suggesting we go to DCE with, the Climate Action Plan and the, the capital implementation reduction, we would, we would contract out with someone else?
We would either do that work in-house or use other, other support as needed, but it would not be used under the existing contract.
Do we need to make a decision with this now, or can we make that decision later?
This is simply to direct staff to apply for the grant, to get the dollars, and then we can always decide how we allocate it later. But it would not be my intention to grow the consultant contract, aside from that modeling.
And we need that brought back to us at the disposition of these funds? Should we get the grant?
Sure.
Good.
Other questions? The transportation modeling, our traffic modeling, we've done so many transportation studies that have, you know, done us very, very little. What specifically, is this going to be throughout the entire city, particular corridors?
The modeling would, would estimate the amount of emissions that are released from transportation uses in Capitola today, and then model various reduction targets and determine what the build-out of the general plan, how much emissions would be released under that scenario. And so what you need to have is a volume of, of traffic, assumptions of how much emissions are released, and then model in various scenarios where you have reduction actions.
So we're going to develop a baseline for emissions, and then strategies to reduce them?
Correct.
Okay. Stephanie?
Wasn't the Ambag consultant working on this?
Ambag produced energy modeling for us, and we have that data that's available for us now. The three parts of a Climate Action Plan are generally your, your transportation emissions, your waste emissions, and then your energy consumption emissions. We have two of them. The transportation piece is what we still need to do.
Because they had gotten a grant, and then went around to all the jurisdictions in the tri-county area, bi-county area to do that. So that didn't cost us anything, which was really good, really nice, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Member of the public that wants to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back.
I'll move that we adopt a resolution for a sustainable communities planning grant.
Now, understood, there were two, there were two, level, okay, that we need to...
And apply for both of them.
The $210,000 amount.
And that, should this, friendly amendment that this, if the grant should be granted to us, that the, before the disposition of any of these funds that comes before the council? Thank you.
And I would, if we got those funds, all of them, I would not want this to be a major project for staff, because we already have, their workload is very, very, very high. So I think the only thing we could do would be to hire a consultant to do that. You'd have to supervise it and, and organize it and so forth, but to, but to add that kind of a task on, right now, when we have so much going on in the city, so many other projects, I don't think that, that would be, we'd figure it out.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioner, are you going to come back to us with some kind of process that we're going to deal with, how we're going to deal with the zoning ordinance?
I will. The intent right now is to get the general plan adopted. That should be coming before you in the next couple of months for your consideration. My plan is immediately on the heels of that, is to turn our focus to zoning ordinance, put the pedal to the metal, so to speak.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 9F, which is to consider introduction of an ordinance prohibiting the sale of tobacco products within 1,000 feet of public libraries. I think this is the Mike Termini ordinance?
I think that it shall be heretofore known as Mike Termini ordinance.
Is there a staff report? Oh, chief, hi.
Good evening, Mayor Storey and council members. This is an ordinance, introduction of an amendment to our ordinance of 8.38030 and 838.112, specifically subsection B, adding libraries to our ordinance that would prohibit the sale of tobacco products within 1,000 feet of public libraries. Just to give you a quick background, last year, the council passed an ordinance, number 980, that amended this section pertaining to smoking regulations. Just two weeks ago, Councilmember Termini pointed out that we inadvertently left the words "library" out of, or "public libraries" out of our amendment back in February of 2013, and so this amendment adds that to that section. And I just do want to note that the amendment to subsection B would not apply to a business selling tobacco products that was in operation lawfully on the date immediately prior to this chapter becoming effective, and also in section two, a lawfully operating business that sells tobacco products that would otherwise become ineligible to receive or renew a tobacco retailer permit due to the creation or relocation of a school. So I just wanted to make sure that that was added, and that, that is consistent with what we have today.
Question?
Yes.
Chief, why do we have the tobacco retail permit language in there if we do not have tobacco retail permits yet in the city? Is just ready for, to, in the event we decide to institute that process?
That's correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Where does, where does those smokeless tobacco businesses come in play here?
The e-cigarettes, is that what you're referring to? We are working with the city attorney on that when, when that will come forward.
Yeah, I'm working on that ordinance. Actually, I wrote the, the ordinance in Santa Cruz, and another staff member in the city manager's office is preparing the public health findings to support that ordinance.
Are there any, yet?
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of literature out there about this stuff, and it's, you know, it's nicotine-based, it's got odors that, and it's considered a sort of a gateway, and there are all kinds of applications coming into the city of Santa Cruz to establish e-cigarette lounges and things of that nature. And the reason is that there are forms of marijuana that can be used with these e-cigarettes that are odorless and relatively undetectable, so it's become very popular, and so a number of cities are trying to get ahead of that before it happens. And a lot of the, since Washington in Colorado legalized marijuana, we're noticing a lot of products coming across state lines that can be bought over the counter in Washington and Colorado, and brought into the California jurisdiction. So I will work on that ordinance for, for your consideration. You know, once Santa Cruz gets theirs on board, I can crib it and bring it to Capitola.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Dennis?
I get kind of tired of getting a D rating from the Smoking Coalition, year after year.
They've become irrelevant.
It seems like there's a couple of things there on that list that we could actually take on. You know, we, we were this far at one time as a council from banning smoking in the whole village.
I think we bumped up a grade this year because of what we did last year, did we not, Mr. City Manager? Didn't we increase our grade by one?
I, I seem to recall that we went from a D...
D to a C.
To a C.
In one category.
Yeah. It's not, it's not pretty.
We actually made several changes last year. The council did adopt several amendments to the smoking ordinance.
I just sent their director a note today, because she wanted to meet and see if there's other things we can do, so we'll bring that back to you.
I'd like to hear what they have to say. I really would. I, I certainly would not be against banning the whole village, just, I know it's not a popular thing, but it's, it'll become a time, you know?
It will become a time.
Okay, the members of the public that would like to address the council, seeing none, I'll close the microphone.
I'll move approval of the ordinance.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Which brings us to item G, which is the hold of public hearing, and we see public comment and suggestions for the 2014 Community Development Block Grant Program. Staff report?
So the State Department of Housing and Community Development has invited 2014, 2015 grant applications for a, what they call a supernova notice of funding availability. The state accepts applications on an annual basis, but if awarded, you're generally not allowed to apply again for three years. The grants are not to exceed $2 million, and they last for a three-year period, and thus the requirement that you not apply again. Part of the process requires a public hearing, where local agencies solicit public comment and recommendations. That's what we're here doing tonight for the first hearing. If the council directs us to apply, we would return to the council and ask that you adopt a resolution to actually apply for the grant funding. The application is due on April 11th, 2014. Two potential projects that we've identified that we would like your support to fund. The first is the housing rehabilitation program, the other is the first-time homebuyer program. As you recall, these programs traditionally were sponsored in capital until they were defunded in 2011 due to redevelopment termination. There would be a potential for $1 million in grants to fund these programs for three years. Our recommended action is that the council receive public comments this evening and direct staff to prepare the grant application for $1 million to fund affordable housing programs. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Dennis?
Does this, do these grants require a city share contribution?
It does not.
It does not, okay, all right.
Any other questions? Notice the grant is also available for economic development, and the maximum is, what, $2 million on any particular application?
Forgive me, I don't recall the maximum. I think when we reviewed the, the criteria, we did not believe we would, we would score well due to the income limitations.
You mean of the, of the residents, or...
Yeah, I believe it's 51% below median income. If your population meets that criteria, you're scored higher. We don't believe that we would fare well if we submitted that application.
Okay.
There are other CDPG programs that do fund economic development-type projects. This particular supernova, I think, the specific limitations for this type of program funding do limit us a little bit more.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense, but, yeah, I would hope that you would keep an eye out for potential projects, and so we can move on, maybe some of the ideas that we heard last night at the, you know, the, the economic development presentation. So with that, are there members of the public that would like to address this?
David, good evening. Sorry to keep you here up so late.
Right, it's kind of fun, like old times.
Welcome back, yeah.
Thank you. My name's David Foster, Mayor Storey, and members of the council. I guess two years ago is when I left the city after about six years working here as your housing and redevelopment planner. So I'll always remember the city for its commitment to affordable housing, and especially its longstanding commitment to the residents of, of your mobile home parks. And so that was the, the pleasure of working here with, with those issues. The last two years, I've been the executive director for Habitat for Humanity, Santa Cruz County, and Habitat would like to be considered... County, and Habitat would like to be considered for inclusion as part of the Capitola's CDBG application. Habitat is a nonprofit affordable housing organization. We're an independently-funded affiliate of Habitat for Humanity International. The international program works in countries around the world, and the affiliates are the locally-based organizations that build here in the United States. We serve Santa Cruz County, and we've been here for about 26 years. We've completed 38 homes, so we build slowly but intentionally. All of our homes provide permanent homeownership opportunities for low-income families, and we keep our costs down by building not for, but with the community. 80% of our labor in the building of our homes is provided by volunteers who work alongside with the families that are the selected participant families. They are required to put in a minimum of 500 hours of what we call sweat equity in helping build their homes. So if you volunteer with us, you get to work right along with those families, and it's an exciting process. A year and a half ago, we also opened our Restore, which is a 17,000-square-foot warehouse over on the far west side of Santa Cruz on Swift Street, and it, 17,000 square feet of used building materials and appliances and furniture. Everything in the store is donated, and all of the proceeds from that, all of the profits that come from that project go towards our building projects here in the county. So it's a great place to shop, and very exciting because you never know what you're going to find there. Last year, we completed three homes in Scotts Valley that were funded using the last of some of their redevelopment agency money. This year, we're completing two homes in the city of Santa Cruz, using assistance from the city from their home program, which is a federal program that they've received funding directly. This spring, we will begin construction on a phased seven-unit project in the Live Oak area with assistance from the last of the county's redevelopment agency funds. So we built a three-unit project here in Capitola, I think about 10 years ago, and we would love to have the chance to come back and partner again with Capitola. Typically, Habitat, we're able to fundraise and use our volunteers to cover the actual costs of construction, but we almost always need assistance with the construction, or with the acquisition of the site for our projects, and sometimes with also the infrastructure costs. So what we'd like to propose is simply that the city incorporate into its CDBG application of plan to assist Habitat with the acquisition of a building site. And I think there's ways to do that. It's, you simply include that as a project to be funded. We wouldn't actually have a specific site, but I think if there was interest in doing this, we could identify a number of potential sites so that we had a price range that we would be looking in. And then, once the, once the funds, or if the funds are approved, then we'd go out and make sure that we found a site that fit within that budget. And we can do rehab, we can do new construction, we can do very creative things, you know, with different sites as needed. So that's, that's the end of my presentation, but I'd love to do a project with you.
David, you realize the cost of land in Capitola. Not only is there not vacant lots, the ones that are vacant, you want to do multiple, you'd be hard-pressed to find anything under $2 million that you can do multiple with. So we're really not the best environment, really, for this. I mean, there's better environments probably in the county areas than us. I mean, I don't know if we could spend our money outside of this boundary, but I think you'd be hard-pressed to find any land that would be reasonably priced because of the cost of land in this community, so.
Well, I think one of the things that is really nice about Habitat's projects is that they, they're not isolated to low-income communities. They're spread out throughout the community, throughout the county, and I think the other part of affordable housing in my mind is that affordable housing is also an environmental issue, that the more you can have housing that serves your local workforce, the less you end up with people commuting. And there are plenty of jobs in Capitola that are jobs that are service-sector jobs that need, need housing for those workers.
I don't think there's any question of the need.
Yeah.
I want to see your list of land that you can give for a reasonable price. I think it's your first choice.
Well, I think, I think that's, yeah, if there's an interest in this, then we could go out and see what opportunities there are.
One thing I'd like to bring up is that I was around, we did the last Habitat for Humanity over on Romer, and I think it's a fabulous project that the people who are involved actually participated in the construction of it. The one problem I had was is that not one of those houses went to someone who lived in Capitola. They, people came from out of the area and took those houses. So it didn't solve the local housing demand. It actually brought people in from the outside. So is there a way within Habitat for Humanity that requires that someone actually live within the community that it's built?
What we require is that you have to have lived or worked, or you have to live or work in the county in the last year. When we did the project with Scotts Valley, they, the city placed that additional requirement that I think some of those residents had to come from Scotts Valley. So that can be a requirement that you place on the project.
Okay. Stephanie?
I thought that when you brought that up, I remember that. I remember when we talked about that, and we were very interested, but I think at the time, there were federal constraints, and you could not say that a project was only for Capitola residents.
Yeah, I think you have to give a preference, and the wording is tricky, I think, but there are ways to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other members of the public like to address us on this item?
Thank you, and it's good to see you all, and you're all looking younger than, you know.
Well, thank you.
I was noticing Obama's looking a little gray, and you guys are looking younger, so.
Way to get the grant, David. Nice, all right, yeah.
It's the water.
So what's the pleasure of the council? Stephanie?
I support applying for these funds. I think that's very exciting. Anytime we can get some funds for affordable housing. I would not want to put any particular agency in with the grant, though, because there's others that are out there, and that kind of does put all of our eggs in one basket. And it's not, as you said, it's not going to go very far. That money is not, it's not going to go very far. The first-time homebuyer program, you know, we had it before, and as you said, Dennis, before, it didn't really work. If there was some way that we could use it for a first-time homebuyer program for maybe somebody in a mobile home, you know, or something, you know, I don't know. But it just, you know, we've had it, didn't work. I'm not against trying it again, but it's just, it's such a wonderful program to have, housing rehab funds and emergency assistance, and, you know, first month's rent, and last month's rent, and keep people from being homeless. It's wonderful.
The one thing that is good about this grant is the money is transferable between the programs. So if there wasn't much activity in the first-time homebuyer, the mortgage assistance program, we could use it to do additional rehabs in the city. So we have some flexibility.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So move?
Two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, staff, for bringing us this opportunity to revitalize our affordable housing program. So with that, that brings us to the adjournment for this meeting, and I will adjourn us to the next regular meeting of the City Council on Thursday, March 13, 2014, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Hall Council Chambers. Good night, Capitola.
Thanks.